Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, April 14th. Before we call the regular meeting to order tonight, we do have a workshop, and this is a follow-up on the contract zone presentation. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here this evening. I know it's very busy with budget, so we appreciate your taking the time to hear from us. Just what we're going to look at tonight, our agenda, is to go through some introductions so you know everyone here at the table, give you a quick overview of the project, recap where we are, provide you results of our staff analysis, and then go through some next steps and action items. So as usual, I brought friends, so we'll go on the left side of the table here. Would you like to introduce yourself, Attorney Plant?
Good evening, council members. My name is Ben Plant. I am one of Leah Ration's colleagues at Drummond-Woodsom, and she was unavailable tonight, so I am pinch-hitting for her.
Good evening, members of the council. Jim Katsifakis from Perkins Thompson, working for the city on this project. Thank you.
And of course, you know.
David Toomey, Director of Code Enforcement.
Tracy Disjardins, Director of Economic Development.
So whenever we have a consulting attorney working with our city attorney, we want to make sure that the two attorneys concur with the legal opinion being used. So in this case, the legal opinion that you have before you in the packet of materials, I just handed out a copy of the legal opinion, as well as a copy of this evening's presentation. We just want to make sure that Attorney Plant and Drummond-Woodsom for Leah Ration concur with the legal opinion written by Jim Katsifakis.
The city solicitor and I have had an opportunity to extensively discuss the legal opinion, and her and I agree with Attorney Katsifakis' opinion and the various legal outcomes to the scenarios that he described in the opinion as well. So we are in agreement with Attorney Katsifakis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Similar to the last presentation, just the recommendation is that we do not hyper-focus on any one person's contract zone and something that did or did not happen years ago. We're just trying to focus on the future here and present to you what our analysis Our overview, so we started this project with you all some time ago when we brought forward a previously drafted ordinance amendment and standard operating procedure that would look at Chapter 230, Article 17 of the ordinance, and bring forward amendments to how we do contract zoning as a city. I'm sure most of you all remember that. As part of that project progressed, there were questions that arose, and so we looked for a legal opinion and asked Attorney Katsifakis to help us as an outside counsel at that time. So we returned to you in February 10th. We did a public presentation, similar format as this, and I shared with you that we would categorize the contract zones focusing on the pre-2021, so the pre-zoning ordinance contract zones, and we'd categorize them into different buckets, and I'll just re-review that again in a minute. And then we would spend two, we would need about two months to complete that analysis, read through each contract zone, and make contact with as many property owners that held contract zones with the city as possible. And so two months would put us at April 10th, so obviously there was not a council meeting on April 10th, so we're here today. So we're right within that timeline. And then we, that's where we're at. We're returning to follow-up and continue on with next steps. So just, and again, just to point out, we are not talking about these contract zones. There are three contract zones that were issued by the City of Saco post-2021 zoning ordinance revision. Those are 146 Main Street, multifamily housing over here in downtown, 265 North Street for Blue Elephant Catering and Small Events Center, and 45 Smith Lane, which is the Chipotle and Jersey Mike's site. These three contracts are outside of this review, again, post-2021 zoning ordinance. So the rest of this presentation will focus on pre-2021 contract zones. Just a little recap of how we categorized these. They were going to either be in completed or completed bucket, substantial construction met bucket. In those two categories, they, projects would be able to continue in some fashion or format. If it was a substantial construction met category, they would be able to be constructed to completion as we understand it. If contracts had terms that were not fulfilled, such as requirements that were not fulfilled or conditions that were not fulfilled, those contracts would generally be considered null and void. So that's how we did our buckets, if you will. A good example of a null and void contract would be, hypothetical, would be somebody gets a contract zone approved but then does not fulfill the planning board approval for site plan review after they get their contract. Just a little disclaimer here, staff has gone through, we've done our analysis, I've also worked with Dave Toomey on this closely, as well as Tracy Disjardins, and we've looked through this as staff. We've done our best, knowing what we know about existing site operations, contracts that have been completed, the permitting that's been done, this is what we have based on the best information we have to date. Just so you know, we did not, this was not a witch hunt, if you will. We did not go, we were not trying to be punitive here. We really just tried to take the legal opinion and analyze where things were at today and put them in the right categories. So what we wound up with is that there are 29 projects with contract zones that are completed, meaning that there may be some fashion of the contract zone that because we issued a contract zone, there may be some portion that's legally non-conforming today. An example used in Attorney Katsifakis' memo was the Convenient MD property. For instance, today, that property meets the requirements for the zoning district for setbacks and dimensional standards, but their signage is larger than what the zoning allows. So the signage will be able to be kept in place until such time as it's removed. And Dave Toomey knows to monitor this. Do you want to add anything to that, Dave?
No, I'm all set. Any non-conforming sign can stay until it has to be removed. Kentucky Fried Chicken bucket was one of those, the same way.
And the other option besides removal is that they could come in and seek a change to the ordinance, and if the council believes that that's appropriate, the planning board recommends it, then you might make that change.
We have three projects with contract zones where substantial construction has been met, based on our understanding of the contract zone agreement and the definition of substantial construction from our ordinance. In these cases, and we have consulted with the attorneys, these projects can continue until they are completed. And then we have 14 projects with contract zones that are null and void, and I don't want to put Counselor Hatch on the spot, but it's a perfect example. There was a contract zone issued for 95 King Street years ago, and then it was bought by Thornton Academy, and the contract zone was reissued for housing for students. And then more recently, Thornton sold the property, the contract zone was not necessary, and the property is redeveloped into multifamily workforce housing to support local workforce development. So that contract and its amendment are now in the null and void bucket, mostly because they're not necessary anymore. I won't go through reading each one of the contract zones that were considered, we're considering completed contract zones. Just in general, the uses in buildings created by these contract zones will be able to remain unless the use is abandoned, and we have provisions for that in our ordinance. And then as staff understands it, we definitely cannot see amendments to these contracts. So these are closed out, it can't be amended, and they are what they are. When I spoke with several property owners, I did explain that there could be potential for something that conforms to today's zoning ordinance. If it doesn't conform to today's zoning ordinance but meets the comp plan, then perhaps there's a path forward to do a zoning ordinance amendment. A lot of developments, though, when, for things they may have needed contracts at one point, maybe don't need contracts anymore because the zoning ordinance was rewritten in such a way that we see that in the Convenient MD case and in several other cases. Not all cases, but in several. And in other cases as well, there may be a useful return to use the property for something else that's now allowed for the zoning, something, some similar use that someone could convert it through a conditional use review with the planning board. It is also important to note that since these did have site plan review, even if they fall under today's zoning, if somebody wanted to expand in a conforming way on their property, that property would still be eligible for a site plan review with the planning board. I'm going to pause here, and I'll just ask if either of the attorneys have anything to add at this point.
Really, about the only thing I'd suggest is that with the completed contract zones, they, the owners' operators may have one or more aspects that are legally non-conforming, and it's difficult to expand a non-conforming use or a non-conforming structure. So they may wish to come back for a zoning amendment, and if it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, that's appropriate. Or they might want maybe, maybe another contract zone, but the idea behind all of that zone change, the repeal and replacement of the ordinance was in part to make it less necessary to have to have so many contract zones throughout the city. So you may see some of these back because it's a legally non-conforming use or a legally non-conforming structure. They may want to expand it, it may be necessary for them to do that. There are accommodations that the city can work with them and the planning department and see what's allowed.
The other thing that I did mention as well in previous conversations was, we may look to do a couple of, for instance, cell towers, making sure that existing cell towers with co-located public safety radio equipment are considered essential services that will change, that will need a change to our definition of essential services, but I think that may be something appropriate to bring forward as a future ordinance amendment with the city council. But I'll run through these here so that we can see the list of 29 completed. You do have them right in front of you as well in your handout. So moving forward, then next category we have is substantial construction met. In general, we believe that these contracts can be completed based on the amount of work already completed and the city's definition of substantial construction, as well as how these proposals were approved. So in that case, we have these three shown on the screen. Again, these contract zones themselves cannot be amended, it's only the work to complete what was contemplated in the contract zone. And lastly, we have our null and void category. We have 14 contracts that we are considering null and void for various reasons. The perfect example is the one that I mentioned of 95 King Street. Others, maybe they were no longer needed, maybe they were never developed in the way that it was contemplated. In some cases, they were dissolved formally by the former city councilors, or maybe there's a court decision on file. So there's various reasons why these are null and void, but tried to give you a general reason of why we listed them the way we did here in this presentation. So the next steps that we envision here is to finish the previously drafted ordinance amendments and standard operating procedures that we had started working with you all way back when. We have the red lines, we also have some amendments that were proposed. I think I have some comments from at least two counselors here, so thank you for that. We'll also be doing the necessary mapping to reflect any current post-2021 contract zones. We'll be doing an appendix list as we started with you and provide progress going forward. We'll provide an electronic copy on the city's website where all the contract zones, even if they are dissolved or whatever status they are with their status, can be accessed. And then we'll provide some broader training to our staff members about where these contract zones are and how to help address questions as they come up to our offices. We've added some references here. Just want to give anyone here who's joined on our table here any input, any opportunity to offer any input. So these are also the references that we all took into consideration when reviewing this project. And now we'll open it up for any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, everyone. Any questions for anyone on the panel? Counselor Ed Woodson, Counselor Berman?
Just so I have it, hi. Just so I have it in my understanding, if one of the completed contract zones were to close or dissolve, that would make that contract zone null and void?
So I can start, and then you can jump in. So the way it would work is, there is some existing use, so the use would generally have to be abandoned, and then depending on kind of what is associated there, what I think would depend, which would, it would be a case-by-case basis to some determination here, but.
One way to look at it, let's, just to use an example, Convenient MD built, put up a building. The building is in existence, it's a 15-foot setback, which wasn't allowed back when, but is now. And so you'd have a building that's conforming, it could continue to be a building that would stay in that district, no one would be required to take it down, it could be put to another use, it could remain Convenient MD. So for something that's completed, where there's, and it's perfectly legal, it's non-conforming, non-conformities can continue, so the non-conforming structure can continue to exist, the use could exist as well, it could be a new owner that comes in. So that's not a problem. I think the real concern comes in where, at the other end of the spectrum, someone negotiated a contract, it's been signed, the contract amended the ordinance, but when the ordinance was repealed, the contract went away. And so if somebody had not preserved their rights, had not gone to the planning board, had not gotten the permits, had not started construction under those permits, null and void. I think that's the bright, the two ends of the spectrum, and then in between are the other buckets on Emily's bucket list. And so we, those are the ones that take a little more careful study, but they've been examined, and those are the buckets we have right now.
Thank you.
And just to add, we have a non-conformance section of our ordinance, and Dave's department often works with that section because there are residential homes throughout the city that don't necessarily meet today's zoning.
Yes, Chapter 5 has non-conforming uses, non-conforming structures. So if someone wants to do something, we'll look at that chapter to see if they can do it, because they have some exceptions, but probably the uses is not so much. But buildings, you have exceptions and stuff like that, so we'll take it case by case.
Just to add on to Counselor Ed Wood's questions, is the contract zone transferable if a new business comes in and wants to do the exact same?
The contract zones, the contracts have expired. They went away when the ordinance was determined, as far as zoning goes.
So they would need to start?
They should start afresh if they needed something like that.
Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to everyone at the table for just the amount of work that's gone into this. I really appreciate it, and I appreciate the consistency of the way you've presented this and the iterative approach. I think it makes it really easy to understand, I hope. And I apologize if I'm asking people to repeat themselves or just to say, I just want to make sure that I really understand. When we repealed and replaced the zoning ordinance, those contract zones, which were in actuality amendments to that zoning ordinance, therefore went away. And so when we, when I see emails or hear from the public that says there's no more contract zones, to some degree, that's correct. There are no more contract zones, those zones are gone. But because they were constructed or substantially constructed when the contract was in place, they are now legally non-conforming structures, the same way they would be. they are now legally non-conforming structures, the same way they would be if we changed our current zoning ordinance in such a way that an existing building or business now no longer conformed with the new zoning. Right? And, and we view that as applying to two things. We view that as applying to our completed bucket and our substantial construction met bucket. They, they were legal when they began, that, that then preserved their rights to complete their business or continue their business in construction because it was legal when they started or, or engaged in substantial construction. And because those now, that, that, that specific zoning, that contract zone has now been repealed, that's what means no more amendments or changes to that process or, and they would need to restart that process if additional changes were needed now. But in fact, that would have been the nature of the contract zone anyway. If they wanted to bring changes to the contract zone, that still would have had to go through the amendment procedure regardless. Do I kind of understand the situation correctly?
I, I believe you have that understood correctly.
Thank you.
If I can just go back to the question on transferring, it is possible that some of these will not need to be transferred because the current zoning may already allow for it. So again, I hate to answer it with a case-by-case basis, but would have to kind of look at the zoning and make sure that it does or does not allow for whatever the use or structure is that is requested.
A lot of the reason why there were so many contract zones is, is because of the old ordinance. And, and when the change of the ordinance occurred, the standards for each district were made a little easier to comply with. If it was a business district, maybe you didn't need so great a setback. Maybe different uses were allowed. Districts were collapsed, so there were fewer districts. So it is entirely likely that some of these contract zone-approved buildings and uses may be in compliance, much more so than, and didn't need as much or any changes. So I, I think the, the fact that there's been a repeal of those agreements doesn't necessarily mean problems with regard to those buildings that were built. And the change of use is also something that could be done through code enforcement as well if you were going to change uses within the district. So that's, that allows those buildings to continue to be used.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel Johnson?
Thank you. Um, I'm, I do, I do have an issue with the terminology of null and void as a bucket, and I'm, only because, as I think we've all just pointed out, all of these are null and void. So when you look at this list, it, it's misleading, in my opinion. I feel as though you have a, a list that if I was to look at, I was a member of the public and I just glimpsed at this, I'd have null and void, which to me means they don't exist. But in actuality, none of these exist. So I just, maybe we can change the wording.
Excuse me, what would you recommend that we change it to, Counselor?
I don't know. I, that's...
I think the reason for the different terms is this. The, the ones that were, where the buildings were built?
Yeah.
And the contract was repealed. In all instances, a contract zone was repealed, but there were some that before January 21...
Can we call them repealed, completed then? Instead of, like the null and void, they're all null and void.
Well, when you say null and void, it, it was in response to the, the Dallin litigation because there are some instances where there was a contract zone, council approved it, but the landowner, the applicant, proponent, did not follow through and get the zoning approvals that were required. And if you didn't, under the terms of the contract, if you didn't get those approvals, that contract became null and void. So that's why that bucket, that null and void bucket...
Correct. And I understand that. And there are several others that just expired by the use going...
That's right.
I'm familiar with all of these. The, the other point I would make to council that I think is important, because when, if you, if you take the time as I have to actually look at how, how the repeal impacts specific properties in our individual wards, we repealed the contract, which also means whatever regulations were in those contracts that protected the abutters are gone. And so on the surface, you can sit here and be like, oh, well, that's completed. We're calling something complete. And it very well may be, but without a full understanding of what the requirements were in those contracts, it's kind of hard for me to say something is complete because I don't want to lose the restrictions or whatever may have been in place that, that regulated how the, the site operated. And again, we're not supposed to speak the specifics, so I won't, but I, I know of several in my ward that when I went and looked at them and knowing what was involved, those requirements are also repealed. So there's no question in my mind that as the abutters start to see things, they're very likely to wonder what happened, which is, I, I don't have an answer for it per se, but outside of re-adopting all these contract zones, which is what I had really in mind initially. And then the only other question, if I can find it, wrote it down, well, I don't need it. I just, before we move further forward, this, I, at least as one-seventh of council, I would like to be provided with the detail as to how staff arrived at determining these are in these buckets, with the detail, so we have a clear understanding. I think most up here don't have the past history that certainly I do, so I think that would be helpful.
Counsel Berman?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counsel Johnson brings up two good points and maybe some terminology to suggest what, rather than completed vested rights due to construction completion, vested rights due to substantial construction met, loss of vested rights, null and void, loss of vested rights, whatever might be a way forward. Second, I guess I do have a question. I understand we repealed the zoning, but, but did we repeal the contract aspects of the contract zone also? There, there were sometimes provisions placed on the businesses, amount of cars, hours of operation, number of events. Do those contractual aspects also get repealed with the repeal of the contract zone, or was it simply the zoning aspects of those agreements that were repealed?
Right. That's a good point. What, what the amendment to the code was to make certain changes to the ordinance through the contract. The changes, the amendment to the ordinance was repealed. The validity of the contract with regard to conditions, that's still an issue that's hanging out there. No one's litigated it. No one's raised it. It hasn't had to be raised. You will find that some of the conditions in those contract agreements were added to the land use approval. So you look at the site plan, and you might find some of those conditions in those that's case-by-case basis. But, you know, there, there is, there is an argument, a reasonable argument, that the city has it, it could enforce the conditions imposed by the contract even though the zoning changes that have been repealed.
Thank you. I, I appreciate it, and I appreciate it's a subtle question, but I think an important one, especially for some of what used to be contract zones in the city that, that restricted the nature or hours or other operational characteristics of those businesses in a way that, that, that helped them comply with the neighborhood or, or otherwise, right? Were instrumental, I think, for council approving the contract zone. And if those conditions are no longer in place, I, I think that changes the nature of the business and its ability to, to be a good neighbor in some cases. And so I'd be curious if we can initiate a review of which contract zones had conditions like that and, and get some opinion as to which are covered by the site use or, or other aspects, or which ones would need to be revisited by the city and, and maybe the best way to go forward with that. Because I, I, I think there are some abutters and, and some citizens that, that would have substantial concern if, if rules governing some of these businesses were no longer in place.
So I would like to just get a understanding, just because I know there were, there was a lot of ordinance amendments that the council had wanted staff to bring forward, which are really critical to development. So we have put all those on hold with City Administrator Bohenko's blessing to complete this contract zone. I'm happy to dive further into more detail if the council feels like it's necessary, but what I was aiming to do here was to get a process by which we can go forward with standard operating procedures and understand how we best handle contract zones into the future. And certainly happy to answer, continue to answer questions from counselors. If there's, just to Counselor Johnson's point, if there's any contracts that you want us to dive deeper into for your ward, happy to do that as well. I do want to just have a friendly reminder, though, is everything else is being put on hold. And so if we go back and do a re-analysis of specific contracts, we are talking about another two-month process, and then I'd have to see how long it would take for the attorney review to happen as well. Some of these too, we will get requests from business owners or property owners along the way, so maybe they are best handled with, here's the framework going forward and here's where, here's the information staff has to date. But we certainly can, if City Administrator Bohenko is looking to dive deeper into this, we certainly can do that.
Just from my perspective, I think, I think this really is a critical question about which, whether the contract, the enforceable provisions of the contract remain in place. I, I know we're, we're going to have a, a general fund surplus as we come through budget season. I think if hiring temporary help and/or, and/or legal help was, was necessary, I think that'd be a good use of those funds. I, I think Attorney Kassavikas, just, just his, the, the lack of, the open question nature of, of the, the status of the contract versus the underlying zone, to, to me is a critical one, just as, as one member of the council.
I, I don't know if that's capable of being answered under main law with a definitive, but I think knowing what the possibilities are and where the conditions have been preserved in another, in another permit might, might be helpful.
So in that case, if you do have a particular contract that you want reviewed, please send it to the city administrator, and then he will work with Emily and get that information. Okay? Any other questions or comments? Counsel Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I am also going to jump on this bandwagon, so I, I'm thinking that, I hadn't really thought about the contract conditions, but I think it's important, and I, I, I could be wrong on this, but there may be some conditions in the contract that aren't in the plan. Okay? And, and those are important for us. If I'm going to sit here as a body of seven and bless whatever the final product is, I want to, I want to know, I don't want any unintended, you know, circumstances. So I, I'm going to jump on that bandwagon, so you got three of us. And I'm, I'm thinking that you got 29 completed and three substantial, and not all, I'm guessing not all of them have the kinds of conditions that we're concerned about. So you may, you may find as you vet the numbers, it's, it's, it's less than the total, but I, I don't know.
Oh, agreed. It's just a matter of actually finding the site plan approvals.
I get it.
We may not be able to find, we have all the contracts, but diving deeper, there just may be documentation we may not be able to find, depending on the year, but we will certainly look and we'll do our best to locate anything, but...
And I think an admittance that you couldn't, you, you, you searched and for whatever reasons our archives weren't, weren't helpful, I, I'd like to hear that because I, I think it takes the onus off you. You've done the best you can do with the hand that's been, been dealt to you, but I, I do think that that's an important issue that I, I would like to have resolved as well. And then just a, a point of clarification. So the three that are in the bucket for substantial construction met, I'm assuming that they could continue with any explicit conditions under that contract, but if they want to modify those conditions, they have to come back before the council, because this is a contract. So any, in my, my head, any contract adjustments should come back to the city council for ratification. Is that correct?
So if there were requested revisions to the contract zone document itself, they would not be able to be amended because those contract zones are pre-2021.
Okay.
So they'd have, whatever happens, they'd need to follow the terms of the contract zone as it stands today. There are no amendments.
Okay.
Or they'd have to come in with a new contract zone request.
Okay.
Or potentially fit under the current ordinance or ask for an ordinance amendment.
They're working under permits that were issued under the old contract zone.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. And I think I had written down a few questions, but I think they have been previously answered, so I'm good. Thank you, Mayor McPhail.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just have a question.
Yes.
Can I just ask generally if this presentation and the work done to date meets the expectations of the city council before we progress in the next step, and if this is generally what you were looking for?
Counselors, any objections or comments? Counsel Berman?
I, I guess you asked a direct question, so my, my answer would be yes. I think, I think, as I mentioned earlier, I think the work has been thorough, it's been comprehensive. There are still some outstanding questions that, that I think are important to be answered. But I think the work you've done so far is, is both deep, was a lot of work, and, and brings a lot of clarity to what was an unclear situation for me.
Counsel Hatch?
I would agree. I played baseball, could never hit a curve ball. This is a big curve ball.
Okay.
Okay? And we'd all like to go back to 2021 and do it right, but we didn't. Okay? So that's not your fault. Okay? That's, I think your department is, is rising to the occasion. It's complicated. It's controversial. There's no, in my opinion, right or wrong answer. I think we have answers that we have to come up with and results that we have to put before the council, and we have to create some decision on, on what we feel moving forward, and we're all going to do that to the best of our ability, and then it is what it is. So I think you've done a really good job with a thankless job, so we appreciate that effort.
Thank you.
Counsel Ed Wood?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I, being new on the council, I didn't know what to expect, but this has been very helpful to understand the history, and it seems like you and your staff have been very thoughtful in processing this jagged history and, and made it palatable. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Final comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate it. Okay, I would now like to call the official council meeting to order at 7:07. Please make note that we have all members of the council present, with the exception of Counselor Parks, who has been excused, and the City Administrator Bohenko. Would you join, please, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, the next item, item four, there is no general this evening. Item five is committee correspondence to council. Do any council members have anything to share? Counseler Ed Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two things. One, for Saco Parks and Recreation, we do have, you still have time to sign up if you go to the Parks and Rec website, to sign up and register for Earth Day, which will be on Friday, April 25th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. You can go to one of, I believe, seven or eight locations in the city to help clean up and, and commune with your fellow citizens. And for age-friendly Saco, they have their next luncheon on May 8th, and the doors will open at 11:30, and the meal being served at about 12:00 p.m. at the Saco Elks Club. I believe it, I don't say what it will be, but I'm sure it'll be good.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Moving on to item six this evening, that is public comment. If you would like to speak to the council, please step to the podium, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to address.
David Aaronstam, for Baxter Lane. So I'm here tonight just to say thank you. Thank you to the city on behalf of Mary's Walk. Mary's Walk, for those that don't know, was yesterday, and yesterday was not the greatest day in the world weather-wise. We really would have liked today's weather, but whatever, we couldn't control that. But yesterday was the 27th Annual Mary's Walk, and we raised... But yesterday was the 27th Annual Mary's Walk, and we raised nearly $175,000 for cancer research and to fight cancer in the state of Maine. To date, we've raised more than $4.5 million, and all that money has stayed within the state of Maine. So I'd like to take just a couple minutes, maybe not even a couple minutes, to thank all of the departments within the city that helped us this year and that have helped us in the past. I'd like to do it publicly because it's a long list, and we couldn't do it without them. So first on the list is the Police Department. We meet, I don't know how many times, with the Police Department going over the walk and how many runners and walkers we're gonna have and all of that sort of stuff, making sure that we do it safely, and then make sure that the event goes off without a hitch. And literally, I received an email shortly before coming to this meeting from the Deputy Chief, that yesterday's event was one of those events that went off without a hitch, and we didn't have any incidents. So to me, that's a great thing. So the police, the Public Works Department, Public Works Department works tirelessly, both in years where the city is sort of inundated with bad weather and snow. They clean the streets, they provide traffic control, they help with the route, and generally, they do it with a smile on their face, and have done it for 27 years. We've gotten lots of volunteers. The Fire Department shows up every year, and some years we have an ambulance, but the Fire Department is part of our planning process, and the Fire Department also sends lots of people to the event. The Parks and Rec Department, like Public Works, Parks and Rec is also part of our event. And yesterday, I believe it was yesterday, yesterday we had the safety briefing at the police station in the training room, and I think there were more than 65 people from all these departments and agencies in the room, trying to figure out, what are we going to do? We, I wore my jacket, because we also had a contingent from the local Rotary Club, and the local Rotary volunteers helped to man the streets and do traffic control in some of the streets downtown. And honestly, if they didn't do that, then we would have to hire that out or pay to have some group help us with that, and so that's a huge help as well. And last but not least is Thornton Academy. We had the, we had the event at Thornton this year again, and so students, faculty, administrators, retired teachers, lots and lots of people with ties to Thornton Academy. So I publicly just wanted to say thank you, let you know that the event was a huge success. We have raised, as I said, yesterday, we raised $175,000. I quickly did the math, because I kinda taught math, and over 27 years, so for 27 years, we've raised more than $4.5 million. That means year in and year out, we send $165,000 or so to the Maine Cancer Foundation. And I think that's a huge tribute, certainly not to us, but to the city and everybody that helps us. So thank you.
Thank you, David. I was fortunate enough to speak last year and this year, and one thing that I noticed about the Mary's Walk, just if I could add, just to take a quick second, is the new faces. 27 years, people have come and gone, but there are still so many new faces that are joining that fight. Okay, if anyone else is wishing to speak, please step forward.
As this was at Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. As this was a workshop, not knowing what was going to be presented, I'm going off the cuff and nothing written. I want to thank you very much for those questions, Mr. Berman, Mr. Hatch, and Mr. Johnston, especially about the contracts. Have you received any of those 50 contracts? Many of them are not of any issue, in my layperson's opinion. I've read every one of them, I do have a copy of them, several of them have conditions and restrictions. Is, is that contract been repealed? As we, I just heard Attorney Katsia Fekes kind of wavered on, on, on an answer to Mr. Berman. So I definitely think that you should be following up and actually receiving those contracts so that you are fully informed with full disclosure of what that contract does state. There was a meeting, March 31st, it wasn't on the city calendar that I noticed. I did hear through the Great Valley that it was on a city Facebook page. Thank you, Mr. Gunn, for mentioning that to someone. But here I am, several years, six years, talking about contract zones being on the maps as a former ZOAS appointee. As simple as that subsequent amendment with many other subsequent amendments that were supposed to go to council, we're still doing this five years later. We're in a lot of, of, I don't know any other way to say it, through bars within the city that I know of, and that, and that you know of. And legally, this should not be happening. Shouldn't have been happened from 2019, 2020. It's been mentioned, 2022, that I mentioned with Dolan versus the City of Saco, and then our grievances and call to actions on contract zones. With this meeting, how many attended? Do you wanna know how many of those contract recipients attended that meeting? Were you invited to that meeting? I understand, Mr. Hatch, that you did go. How come that the grievance co-petitioners, four of us are sitting right here, we never were informed? We were the ones, the impetus, to bring this problem of contract zones to the city. The abutters of all these contracts, that is, there's a trickle-down effect, and we're gonna have more lawsuits, we have pending ones, we had a Superior Court, Supreme Court. This is not how I personally want the city of Saco to be run. As far as, I would like to, I would like to know how many were, attended that meeting by the recipients, how many counselors? This is under your purview and your responsibility at contract zones. And I, I thank you for the work that has been brought forth, but I have not received, and I do know that the three behind me have now received a courtesy response from staff on anything that we have brought forward to the city of Saco. Thank you.
Thank you.
Surely, most have read the stellar, hard-hitting investigative news piece from Sunday's paper. Sadly, almost none of the four hours I spent with the writers got into the article. They must have run out of space. On June 6th, 2022, I first emailed the city of Saco to raise safety issues on Bradley Street. Since that time, despite learning from M.D. Traffic Engineer Randy Illion that, quote, "Saco has known about safety issues on Bradley Route 5 for 20 years," end quote, and many more crashes, including a child hit on their bike last week one street over on North, nothing has improved. I wish I had a recording of myself in early 2022, because I said to my husband at our kitchen table, "I bet the only way to make anyone pay attention to how bad traffic is is to totally mess up a huge lucrative project." Then voila, the perfect project on a silver platter. Ironically, I never set out to impact Lincoln Village. I saw it as a vehicle to bring attention to how bad traffic is in our neighborhood. At the community meeting for that project, I spoke to the developer directly about traffic concerns, which he was totally non-responsive to and ignored. Sadly for him, his failure to manage his largest stakeholder, a basic component of even the smallest project, caused his project to fail, not NIMBYs. Because of that, and because of how the city government has functionally ignored taking real, actual steps to improve Bradley, Franklin, Maple Spring, and Tasker, except for, the new Public Works Director did put out a median pedestrian sign, which I appreciated, in front of the rec center on Franklin Street last fall. All intersections are still failing level of service for drivers, walkers, and bikers, and people keep getting in crashes and injured or killed. So I'm a NIMBY, that's me now. If asking for government to step up and provide safe, adequate, intelligently designed infrastructure makes me a NIMBY, here I am. You owe it to us, just like you owe us clean water. I've given anyone who truly doesn't wanna see more development just for the sake of stonewalling change, a literal playbook, focus on traffic. The city has had the same contracted traffic engineer for 20 years, making the same bad design choices all over the city. Everywhere is failing. You could likely ride any project that requires a traffic movement permit into the sunset and derail any construction because of all the infrastructure is failing, level of service for drivers, cyclists, and pedestrians. I also wanna highlight that NIMBY is the best word for lazy, untalented people who can't solve real, complex, and nuanced issues, because it immediately takes power from stakeholders or constituents, steals our voice, negates our concerns, and relegates them to the trash. I've heard people at this very dais use it to describe their own constituents. And I've heard the former mayor use it to me at a public event three years ago, and I hope that those people feel ashamed, and I hope they feel embarrassed, especially Representative Ryan Fecto, who uses it constantly, even to anyone who stands up for walkers and bikers in already failing level of service neighborhoods. But this makes sense, as a review of his political donor history shows a disproportionate number of donations from realtors, real estate interest groups, and construction professionals, all people who stand to benefit from the wave of market rate, rabid, build baby build with no concerns for impact on existing mindsets, on existing neighborhoods' mindset. Thank you for listening to Your Neighborhood Safety NIMBY.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to item seven, and that is the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of April 7th, 2025?
So moved?
Motion made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Okay, that now takes us to item eight, and that is new businesses this evening, and we do have the continuation of our fiscal year 2026 budget presentations, and tonight we do have seven departments with us, sharing their presentations. And first up, we have the Communications Department, and that is page 74 of your budget book. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Thank you all, thank you, Mayor and City Councilors, for the opportunity to present the Communications, Human Resources, and Fringe Benefits budgets this evening. My name is Emily Roy, I'm the Director of Communications and Human Resources for the city. I'll walk you through each of these departmental budgets in different sections. We'll pause after each section to answer any questions that you may have about that particular department operations, and so as the mayor has indicated to begin, please turn to page 74 of your budget book to start with the Communications budget. So in the first slide, you'll see the expenses associated with the Communications Department for operations. We did move funding around for the coming year to better reflect actuals, but we're able to bring our operating budget slightly down by 0.4%, even with accounting for contracted increases affecting communication-specific software. So while software across the city is typically budgeted in the IT department, when there is software that's unique to one particular department, then it's not uncommon for that software to be reflected in the department-specific budget. I'll discuss the major changes to the budget in greater detail on the next slide. The FY '26 Communications Department budget totals $261,376, representing an increase of $15,740 or 6.4% compared to FY '25. The majority of this increase is due to cost-of-living adjustments and a reorganization of responsibilities and position funding. So in this year's salaries, we did adjust to reflect actuals of compensation, and my director role is funded at 50% between HR and 50% between communications, which is reflected in the salary line, as well as the two full-time positions in the department. There's a net decrease of $174 in other operating costs, primarily driven by a reduction in printing expenses and a net reduction in software costs, as I had already explained how that works. The entire operating budget and both full-time communications positions are fully funded by the cable franchise fees, which I'll explain further on the next slide. We've included a conservative estimate for the cable franchise revenue anticipated for FY '25 that we developed in partnership with Finance. Thank you, Judy, for all your help with coming up with these numbers and looking at our year-to-date actuals. The cable franchise fees in Maine are collected by local municipalities as part of agreements with cable television providers known as franchise agreements. These fees are intended to compensate the city for cable companies' use of public right-of-way, such as streets and utility poles, to deliver cable services. The money collected from franchise fees is typically used to support local services that benefit the community. The Saco City Council had made the commitment a few years ago, when the Communications Department was first launched, to use the franchise fees to help provide local programming for our community members, government-meeting broadcasts, educational content, maintaining infrastructure for the cable cast or broadcast of that content, and then offsetting the general municipal expenses related to cable service oversight and administration of the channel. I'd like to take a moment to talk about the cable franchise process to date. Currently, Saco is in the same predicament as other communities in Maine. We have an expired agreement with Charter, but no real traction forward or an enforcement mechanism. It's been almost a year since Saco had joined other municipalities in the state, urging Charter to comply with legal changes in the state of Maine to best protect municipal rights. However, we've not seen any settlement reached from municipalities using the preferred model franchise agreement. Many of you met Tony Vigiu, he's a consultant who specializes in the cable franchise process. So we've been in contact with Tony, and he provides us with just regular updates on what's happening, but in this case, we're getting updates that the process has not moved forward. So once we get word that the process is moving, he's been optimistic that we should see some change soon, we will call for a cable committee meeting to update the group, and we'll also provide an update to the city council on where we're at with that process. With the proposed agreement, we would gain access to additional grant funding for our infrastructure replacement program for the cable cast and video production equipment, so this would reduce the anticipated general fund obligation when that money becomes available. The Communications Department currently consists of three staff members, as I mentioned before. I serve as the Director of the Department with my time divided between the two functions. Andrew, who's with me here, he's the Digital Media Manager, and then Alex is behind the camera, and he's the Communications Coordinator. Looking ahead to FY '26, we are proposing a reorganization of responsibilities to ensure we can continue to meet the growing demands of the department. As part of this reorganization, Andrew's title on this chart has been reflected to more accurately demonstrate this, his scope of responsibility and clearly define our reporting structure. This is part of our citywide efforts in succession planning and clearly delineating some of those reporting structures that were otherwise unclear. Alex's role has also evolved Alex's role has also evolved significantly since FY24, when his position was part-time. His position became full-time in FY25, and he's taken on greater responsibility, particular in managing the cable cast operations and all of the assets in the auditorium. As he's become more familiar with the organization, we've been able to shift some of the responsibilities that Andrew and I previously held, in making sure that everyone has variety in the projects that they're working on and are really specializing in the different areas that they possess the greatest skills. Well, we'll be reviewing specific metrics and achievements in the following slides. I do want to take a moment right now just to recognize the work that Andrew and Alex do. They're often behind the scenes, and they do a phenomenal job in supporting our departments and ensuring community members are connected with important information. So we appreciate all of the work that they put in and working with our different departments to make sure that we are aware of changes, aware of information that should be shared out. And so it really is a team effort, so we just appreciate the contributions of everybody. So for the Communications and Action slide, we have a public meetings metric here, which captures the recording of city council and planning board meetings, as well as information sessions and any of the prep time required to set up equipment for cable casting or streaming. Our social media outreach metric continues to grow each year with increases in total reach, number of followers, and overall volume of posts. The YouTube metric is separate. YouTube is our primary video archive, especially in light of Facebook's recent changes to live video retention. So this is where you can find the records of all of the council meetings, all of the planning board meetings, other information sessions, and then all of the videos that are produced for recruiting or other informational purposes. We successfully launched Code Red in 2024 in partnership with the Police Department and Emergency Management. The current number of contacts includes both digital enrollments and dozens of paper forms collected during outreach. I saw Andrew is actually still entering information into Code Red at the table out back with some paper forms that he had received. The accessibility index here, I'll cover in more detail in the coming slide when we discuss our efforts to ensure more inclusive and equitable communication across platforms, but this one specifically related to the website. And then finally, our e-newsletter frequency has doubled, and despite the increased volume, our open rate remains strong, which is well above the industry average of 23%, falling at 64% open rate. As mentioned previously, that frequency has doubled, so the newsletter is now published the first working day after the 1/15th of each month. While we saw a slight 1% drop in our open rate with that increased frequency, we're still significantly outperforming that industry average and maintaining strong engagement, which we like to see. Code Red was also discussed previously. For city events, this includes support for major community events, as well as long-term planning initiatives, and work with large partner organizations. Our Safe Streets campaign continues to foster ongoing community dialogue around traffic safety in Saco. While this campaign is still in its early stages, it is a collaborative effort, providing support for several departments, such as police, public works, and planning, and soliciting the feedback from BPAC. So we had reached out to BPAC, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, to get their feedback on cyclist education and motorist awareness for cyclists, or how to operate on the roadway, being mindful of cyclists, I guess is the best way to describe that, because this campaign reaches across all users of the roadway, motorists, pedestrians, and cyclists, just trying to keep everybody as safe as we can with increased education and encouraging behavioral changes on the road, in addition to the infrastructure changes and policy changes that come out. Internally, Communications has provided ongoing support for the internal newsletter, which is about to publish its 50th issue. This newsletter connects staff with important updates about benefits, organizational changes, and celebrates employee achievements. Lastly, in partnership with IT, we produced another in-house training video that has received national recognition, winning a National Association of Government Communicators Award. We're awaiting final placement results in May, but congratulations to Alex and Henry for their outstanding work on this project. For FY26, we have planned the following enhancements and goals: expanded wireless microphone access with increased capacity in the auditorium to support flexible event setups, because we're more limited with our current configurations. We've also included a goal of continuing citywide communication support for all 16 city departments and sharing valuable information with the Saco community; ongoing updates to recruitment materials to attract top talent, so we're always thinking of creative ways to place content, demonstrate content, and try to reach people to fill various positions across the organization. And then the next three items are part of more compliance-related goals. So the first one is the ADA compliance planning. So we plan to develop a roadmap and tracking for new municipal ADA standards due to the updated web content accessibility guidelines, and the deadline for compliance is April 2027, due to our community's population size. As described in the revenue slide, we'll continue to monitor updates to Maine's Model Franchise Agreement to prepare for cable negotiations. And then lastly, we included a proposed hybrid meeting system expansion, which will be initiated with an RFP process to add hybrid capabilities to more city facility meeting rooms following a municipal budget process. Before I move on to the HR Department budget, please let me know if you have any questions about the Communications budget. Thank you, Emily. Any questions or comments for Communications? Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I just wanted to personally note, it's very obvious that the level of communication has improved significantly, and I want to commend you for that. I do have a question regarding, like, the newsletter. I'm assuming that we have print copies available here for those folks who are not connected to social media. Do we, or do we have any other accommodations?
Sure. So currently, if we have somebody reach out to us and let us know that they would like to receive a copy of it, and they are not digitally connected, then we're always happy to print copies of things. So they may come and reach out to us directly. Sometimes they'll go to Michelle Beasley in Administration, and everyone's really good about making sure we get information to people regardless of how they're able to access it. And then it's not uncommon for us also to partner with either age-friendly or seniority to get targeted information out to different groups, to make sure that if there's a topic of particular interest, we don't just rely on those digital platforms to connect them with information.
But I think that's very important, so I'm glad that that's been given some consideration. And then Andrew, I'm just going to toss you a personal compliment. You've been out and about in the community here for several years now. I think you represent the city really well. I'm getting a little nervous. My wife is very fond of you through her age-friendly interactions, but I think it's important for you to know that, that what you do is good quality. You're an excellent representative of the city when you're out there snapping those photos and engaging everybody. So I just wanted you to hear that.
Thank you very much. Saco's a wonderful community.
Anyone else?
Just comments, I guess, towards council. As Director Roy indicated, when we went down this path of the Communication Department, I had put forth the amendment at the time that we would use cable franchise fees. At that time, it was somewhere between $350,000 and $400,000, if I remember correctly. And the thought was that, you know, there'd be no cost to taxpayer by just utilizing those franchise fees, which, you know, for me at the time made sense. I will say that there were other councilors that enjoyed having that $400,000 deposited into the general fund. But as we can see, because of technology, people have unplugged, so to speak, and you're looking at diminishing revenue stream. If I'm looking at these figures correctly, it looks as though we're now consuming the total amount of the revenue stream that comes in, plus some, which, again, I'm fully supportive of the department. It just, the question comes to mind about the contract, the negotiations. It's good to hear that we're having them, but I have to remind people here that we've been out of contract since before COVID, 2019. Whenever Charter bought or merged with, whatever the legal term was, with Time Warner, we haven't had a contract. So I guess I'm concerned that we've just been out of contract. I'm hearing everybody else in the states the same way, but perhaps many, maybe they're willing to come forth and put a good faith effort, but if they're not, I think that maybe we should consider joining forces with other municipalities and taking this to the legal system. Because, again, we collectively as council over the years have spent more and more to, you know, for the benefit of the community, for the benefit of this room, to put sound systems in and everything else, which is now going on the taxpayers', you know, backend. So that's concerning. And then, so like I said, I'm glad to hear we're moving forward, or hopefully with negotiations. I would hope that, you know, those are pretty aggressive negotiations, considering. I would also say that, you know, we had penalties in the old ordinance in place that doesn't seem as though we've been penalizing them, so it just seems more the reasons to be, you know, more difficult with them. And then additionally, and this is outside of our chambers here, but when you look at this, the whole system, right, as it was described, that cable franchise existed because of the use of the right-of-way. Well, in the last 20, 30 years, since this came into place, obviously, the technologies have changed, and we're still operating off an antiquated system for the most part, right? There are still, hey, myself included, I'm still a subscriber. But it kind of, I think the question should be raised in Augusta, whether or not we should now be looking at internet franchise fees, because if we look down, at least to downtown, I watched, you know, almost every hundred feet, new infrastructure being installed by the latest internet provider, using our right-of-ways. And to my knowledge, they don't have a contract, they aren't required to have a contract, but there is no requirement for them to pay in. That's a lost revenue in my mind. So it's just kind of throwing it out there. If we see our reps and senator, I know it's at the top of a list of many things for me, but it's something to consider. I know some states have tried to go after Netflix or some of those streaming providers. I don't know how successful that was, because they played with the word "video provider" or something. It's above my pay grade, but I think it's more realistic that you look to those internet providers that are in our community, that are using our right-of-ways. Outside of that, I really don't have anything specific to the department, other than, good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a quick question. What is our relation, what are we still doing with TA TV? Is that still an active, how much notice is going on there? How many meetings type of thing?
So the, when we made a few changes to our system, I can't recall which year it was, but we moved our equipment to be able to actually do the cable cast and stream meetings to downstairs from upstairs. And at that point, we also had changed, so Thornton Academy was no, they no longer had the staffing ability to be able to manage that channel independently. So what we had done at that time is we have taken any education content that TA wants to share, that information, they just need to reach out to us, it would go on the channel, so they'll send us content. And then one of the things that Alex does is he will go through and make sure that there's enough content being scheduled on the local channel, because we've had, Old Orchard Beach is another partner in kind of providing that information, so that's the, I guess, the backup to our stream. So we've been working through the changes to make sure that the Saco content is the content that people are seeing whenever they turn on the local channel, and that includes all PEG programming. So that's the public information and the education channel. We have a single channel. We don't have an education channel and a municipal channel. So we still partner with the schools, including TA, on any content they have that they would like shared, but they are not the ones that are managing the channel.
So we basically have taken it over?
Yes.
Okay. Because that also lead into a question, and I can't find it right this time, but I do know that we're giving, as a supported entity, we also provide TA TV funding.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
Yeah. Actually, Councilor Parks had pointed it out, and I was just, I saw it, and I was trying to find it real quick.
Oh, no, it's there. It's basically just been a gift to TA for at least eight years.
Yep.
We'll look into that, though.
There was a council at one point that tried to cut that, and we'll just say that.
And yeah, and that's not the reason, just so that we know what we are doing and what our input, and, you know, if it still is being broadcast from TA with their students the way it used to be versus what has changed to it. So, okay. Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
And if I can just quickly respond to some of Councilor Johnson's questions and points. So we had an opportunity a few years ago to join a consortium of municipalities for cable franchise negotiations, the purpose of cable franchise negotiations. So that was the same time when we did the audit of the fees and making sure that we were capturing all of the revenue owed. So we are at the point where we would conduct another audit to make sure that we're receiving the proper funding under the agreement, because the agreement actually expired prior to me coming to City Hall in 2015.
Yeah, I want to say it was, Rick was manager, and I think the council got an extension or something, but I don't think there's been a contract my entire time on council. My thinking was just, it seems as though Charter kind of looks at, oh, you're just dinky Saco, and they kind of treated all of the municipalities the same, and, you know, leveraging all of us collectively and say, no, we're not going to take this anymore. Seems, you know, sensible to me. I just, you know, it's strength and power, or power and strength, whatever.
And if you recall, the agreement that we had brought forward, so I believe at the time, Director Panero and I had brought forward the information to date, and so while we haven't had an agreement since, you know, prior to 2015, the Maine Model Franchise Agreement that we built the proposal on, or our starting point of negotiations, is reflective of just that. So it's municipalities coming together to have consistency for what each municipality is expecting from Charter, and that there, it aligns with the recent legal changes that enable us to capture more, including discussions around alternative fee collection for streaming and other programming that was not historically captured under the franchise fees. But what we're happy to do is, at a future council meeting, I said, once we get a little bit of information, that's hopefully more progress than no progress, then we're happy to come back and give more information about the process, so everybody has the same historical reference and information moving forward.
So for the Human Resources budget, please turn to page 67 of your budget book. On this slide, you'll see the expenses associated with the Human Resources Department's operating budget. So we'll walk through this portion first, and then we'll move on to a review of the fringe benefits section. For FY26, similar to Communications, we reallocated funding to better align with actual spending trends, which allowed us to reduce the HR operating budget by 4%. I'll go into more detail on the next slide, but some of the key changes reflected in this increase were acknowledging the part-time HR generalist position and moving funding for citywide education efforts into fringe benefits to better reflect where and how those resources are being accessed. The total FY 2026 budget for the HR Department is reflected here, and it represents an increase of $52,525, or a 21.2% increase compared to the FY25 budget. A key factor in the budget increase is what I had just described, so proper funding for the FY25 mid-year adjustment that included the addition of a part-time generalist position. This reflects that mid-year change and ensures proper funding moving forward. And-
And then also the cost of living adjustments to ensure employee compensation keeps up with at least inflation, that's also reflected in that salary change. There is a $1,642 net decrease in other operating costs. This reduction is due to adjusting the funding to better reflect actual expenditures. And we moved some training funds out of the HR department into the fringe benefits budget to better reflect those citywide professional development efforts, rather than those just being housed in the human resources budget. And then the departments still have their industry-specific training in their department budgets, so that has not changed with this proposal. So on this slide, you'll see the change that I had described, where the HR generalist position, we created the addition of that part-time position last year, and there were several factors for that. But in order to ensure we had good continuity of operations, unfortunately, what happened is if one person was out, then all of those responsibilities fell on me as the backup. So when I had people out in both departments at the same time, just became really challenging to keep up with the demand. Then we have three full-time equivalents. So again, I'm split between the two, so I'm a part-time headcount as well, or a half a headcount. And we're committed to supporting really our greatest asset, which is the people. And some of the responsibilities for HR include recruiting and staffing, employee relations, compensation and benefits administration, training and development, compliance and policy enforcement, employee wellness and support. We provide support to administration and departments for personnel matters, performance management, and then also provide recommendations for organizational-wide professional development and leadership development opportunities. So these functions collectively contribute to a productive, engaged workforce, and our goal is to make sure all of our employees feel supported, so they are able to support the mission of our city, which is being able to provide quality services to our community members. And just real quick, I'm extremely grateful for Carolyn, Casey, and Leanne's efforts in supporting our employees with various needs throughout their employment with Saco. When we first got involved in making changes to the Human Resources Department and enhancing the services available to our employees, there was a lot of work that had to go into making sure things were operating correctly. Employees felt safe to come to HR and feel supported and have their concerns heard. So with that, we did see also an increase in utilization, which led to some of these changes as well. So here are some of the HR in action items, so some of our accomplishments based on our FY '25 goals. So in FY '25, we supported 26 leaves of absence and coordinated five temporary work arrangements, reflecting our commitment to employee well-being. We onboarded 39 full-time and 35 seasonal temporary employees, processed 26 separations, and supported four retirements, ensuring smooth transitions through improved onboarding and offboarding practices. We received 1,556 applications for 41 vacancies across 33 unique positions, highlighting the success of our creative recruiting strategies. These efforts have helped attract diverse qualified candidates with funding for recruitment reflected in the fringe benefits budget. Our wellness program, led by Amelia Foster, our wellness coordinator who works at Parks and Recreation, is primarily funded by a grant from the Maine Municipal Employee Health Trust, covering all employees on the city's health insurance. Additional funding has been funded using savings from our workers' compensation fund. When we have seen a favorable mod rate, we'll get a reimbursement for the overage, and so that money has been historically allocated to go back into wellness for prevention. For our FY '25, we had a goal to broaden our wellness offerings beyond just what you standard, the standard approach to things around nutrition or exercise, and we launched Winter Wellness Bucks and Mental Health May to encourage people to get out and do activities that help them recharge and take care of their, or focus on self-care. And we also have continued our expanded gym reimbursement program and the Healthy Care 90 program. So we have continued with those more classic nutrition and exercise-focused programs, but we've also launched lunch and learn sessions on financial and estate planning, which was one of the council recommendations from last year's process as well, to really expand beyond some of the existing programming to include that financial wellness component. One of the sessions that we held this year was creating a living will, and we brought that training to the police department as well, to try to do some department-specific education, so that we could see if people were more inclined to come if that programming came to them, instead of expecting them to gather here. And so that was very well received, and so we plan to continue to do that in the coming year, because we really want to make sure that we're capturing our public safety departments and employees who are working second and third shift. We recorded 37 workplace injuries in FY '25, including 14 medical claims and five lost time claims. Now, this isn't an accomplishment metric, but this is something I wanted to bring forward because safety remains a priority for FY '26, with a focus on proactive safety measures and ergonomic improvements to reduce injury rates. And really, the goal is we want to foster a safe work environment and a culture of safety compliance. So this is one of the things that I've mentioned to the council over the years, of the work that we've done in the workers' compensation space and risk management. And so now that we are seeing an increase of what would be considered those preventable claims, now we'll have to revisit a meeting with the department-specific safety committees, going through the different trends that are being seen. Are employees utilizing the proper PPE? Is there a training gap? So we'll be going through a deeper dive into why those trends exist, and then what we can do to prevent those preventable injuries. So this will require the support of all of the departments, but it's very important to make sure that we're keeping employees safe and keeping them engaged at work. And then another FY '25 goal was to enhance training, compliance, and talent development for employee retention and succession planning. And so to date, we've been able to connect 10 employees with leadership development programs. We launched three department-specific initiatives, impacting more than 150 employees. And then for our planned initiatives for the remainder of FY '25 into FY '26, we'll engage 100 employees in those programs. And departments continue, as I said, to have their more industry-specific funding, but so far, the feedback for the programs that we've trialed and created for departments, it's been very positive feedback, and they've been well-received. And so now we know that we're connecting people who have been promoted through the organization with skill development for leadership in addition to already mastering their specific industries. So just a few more accomplishments. As of March 2025, we successfully remediated the 268 I-9 records, achieving full compliance with our historical records, and completing the digitization process that we started two years ago. I'd like to recognize our Generalist, Casey, for all of her efforts with the I-9 remediation process. It was a huge undertaking, and essentially, every record had to have some sort of correction made to it. But now we know all the records being produced now are compliant, and all of the records that we have are compliant as well. Another change was that we've transitioned back to occupational health at the, it's formerly known as WorkWell. So Bitterford has part of the Maine Health branch, I guess, is there's occupational health. And so by having employees be able to go to Bitterford instead of having to travel to South Portland, we've been able to respond to the need for more personalized and convenient care. So by making that change, which we did kind of a soft launch of it, the feedback has been pretty positive on the experience there. So when it comes to your occupational health provider or preferred provider, we do periodically just check in to see if it's, if the arrangement's working well, if any changes are needed, what are the costs for the different tests, and then what is the employee experience when they go there. And then I would say another highlight to share is one of, another one of our FY '25 goals was to prepare the organization for future leadership needs. And so we had several internal promotions occur across public works, finance, fire, police departments. So we had equipment operators, lieutenants, captains, sergeants, deputies, department heads, all levels of the organization, and almost every department experienced some sort of change. And there were really positive changes and a lot of enhanced employee morale when you're able to do an internal promotion. So in the coming year, there are more structural changes that have been included in this budget process, and we will continue to have that lens on succession planning. That was one of the council goals developed a few years ago, and it's been one that's been carried through. And so as recruiting becomes more and more challenging, it's just more and more important to focus on retention and developing your people. So for FY '26 goals, you know, we'll evaluate our HRIS, or our Human Resources Information System, to improve accuracy, efficiency, and the user experience, and determine long-term system needs. We'll strengthen onboarding, so we want to build a consistent onboarding program that, across departments, so making sure that once employees leave Human Resources for their onboarding, there's a structured orientation and onboarding at each department waiting for them. We will continue to partner on developing career pathways and identifying future leaders and helping people reach their career goals whenever possible here. And then we have the ongoing research into main paid family medical leave and the workforce impact. We'll be updating the non-union compensation plan to address equity and market competitiveness, and that's reflected in the payroll contingency funding in one of the coming slides. And then for wellness, I already went into this in great detail. So we will continue our wellness programming, and we'll focus in on some of our major drivers for claims, to try to focus more on the preventative space. And then for performance management assessment and update, we'll continue to partner with administration to determine the right performance management methodology and make sure the departments are consistently administering these, and that it is meaningful for the employees who are operating within that particular department in the position that they hold. All right, so before I get into fringe benefits, are there any questions?
Any questions or comments for Director Roy? Not seeing any right now. Go ahead. Thank you.
Then please turn to page 138 of the budget book for fringe benefits. And again, I just want to recognize Judy Belanger, who you've all seen multiple times now, the interim finance director. She partnered with me on creating the fringe benefits budget, so thank you, Judy, for your assistance. And also, depending on questions you might have, I may also need to turn to Judy to answer that question. So in this budget, the budget overview here, this includes all of the compensation and benefits for employees that are not reflected in their salary lines. So the salary lines are housed at the department-specific level, and then all of the other benefits are located in the fringe benefits section. But this does not include the wastewater department employees, because those are under the enterprise fund. So for unemployment and workers' compensation costs, you'll see that there was an increase for these lines. So these reflect our current payroll obligations and have been appropriately funded based on the renewal process. So we provide a payroll worksheet, and so based on the salaries for positions, the number of positions, and many other criteria, they determine what our obligation is for both unemployment and for workers' compensation costs. So our mod rate is currently .71, which is a key metric for workers' compensation costs. And as mentioned previously, this remains on our radar for ongoing monitoring and future adjustments to help keep our mod rate at a strong level. For health insurance costs, so this, the 21.2%, so this actually reflects a half a year of FY '25's increase, because it would have been budgeted for a partial year. So it includes the updated costs and the vacancies, so vacant positions, we do have to fund for a potential obligation there. And then we also have the, so that 9% health insurance increase that we experienced in FY '25, but also planning for a potential increase for half of the year for FY '26. And in that health insurance cost budget, this reflects only the city portion, so the city pays 80% of the health insurance costs for premiums, and the employee is responsible for 20% of that premium cost. And the health insurance cost here does also include basic life insurance coverage for all employees, regardless of their enrollment in health insurance, using current salaries as the basis for that calculation. Then you'll see the FICA number went up, that's also due to funding vacancies properly and accommodating any wage changes within departments. Then you'll see the main paid family medical leave is up 221.3%. So that is because the last budget also included a partial year's worth of funding, and this number is based on the city obligation for half a percent of the, of wages for the employees. So that number is based on our current salary obligation as well. And then for our medical testing costs, these have increased due to higher turnover and the need to fund pre-employment. So sometimes we've been able to use any vacancies to help offset these costs, but in order to demonstrate some of the true costs of replacing employees and trying to get people through the process, we have a lot of costs with medical testing, especially for our public safety departments. So we needed to better capture those. And then for background checks, we have maintained a flat number for this year, because most of the expense really is in that medical testing. And so as seen in the last slide, the tuition budget includes funding for citywide leadership training and police academy costs, so these were not previously accounted for in the budget, and so we worked to make sure that we accounted for those police academy costs. And the recruiting budget has increased to better reflect the cost of recruiting for positions in the coming year. So notably, you'll see in FY '24, the recruiting costs were, it was an outlier, and that was driven by a significant investment in patrol officer recruitment, so I'll just go back one slide real quick. So you'll see there, under that recruiting, the 52,000 number, so we, that was different recruiting methods that we used above and beyond any of the standard methods that we use for turnover. And so that was an opportunity to use some funding. We used the vacancies in the police department to fund that additional cost for recruiting, but we were able to place content on YouTube, Spotify, meeting with different veteran groups, a lot of different channels to expand our reach for that particular recruitment. And then lastly, if you look at the payroll contingency, you'll notice the decrease from the prior year, so I'll go back one more, too. So that the payroll contingency line will fund evaluating those non-union wages to make sure that we remain competitive, that we look for pay equity and compression issues as other salaries have changed across the organization, and also for any unresolved CBAs that will be expiring within this time period as well. So by making strategic adjustments in the areas that we've talked about with payroll contingency, recruitment, and professional development, we are preparing to support the workforce effectively while... the workforce effectively while we feel maintaining that fiscal responsibility, which is something that we all really need to be mindful of when we're bringing forward these operational budgets. And I know that all of the department heads that I work with have put a lot of thought into making sure that we try to balance those two things of providing the services that we know our community members have relied on, and then also making sure that we're fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Emily, I think you said this, and I missed it, I couldn't get my pen writing fast enough. With the budgeted increase in the health insurance, you said you are anticipating a certain percentage, can you repeat that to me?
So I had shared that we experienced a 9% increase in FY25. Right now, we, our claims experience does indicate to me that we should anticipate another larger increase. So it's not a trend that's really unique to Saco, but it's one that has been observed across all the Employee Health Trust members, that there's just increased utilization of health insurance and attending to, you know, we're still seeing the effects of people delaying some procedures and different medical appointments during COVID. So there was a lot of catch-up, but also the cost of procedures has gone up quite significantly.
It's a common problem. Health insurance is a common problem amongst industries. Is it, you know, I, I know you had to pick a number, but I'm assuming you may have picked high, it's, is it conceivable that our actual increase could come below?
The hope.
Yeah, yeah.
The hope is that we come below.
Keep your fingers crossed, and I'll do the same for you. And I just, I just wanted to have that in my head, seeing that number is fairly large, but I get it. And I think that maybe there's some hope we can squeeze a little bit back from that. Other than that, I just wanted to comment on the culture of the city, at least from my vantage point, from what I've seen, and I'm going to give some kudos to our city administrator, the willingness to actually worry about retention of existing employees, because it's much cheaper to keep an employee than replace them, and, but you have to create a culture for that. And I think the, the other contributor to that is the willingness to promote from within because it just, it just fosters that culture. So I just, I said this to city administrator before, and I just think it's important for us philosophically to recognize that there may be some costs associated with that, but I think the long-term savings is retention and good, good work culture. So I, I hope we can continue. It, it looks like that's tantamount in your plans moving forward, so I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you, anyone else? All right, not seeing anyone, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the list this evening is the Planning Department, and that is page 96 of your budget books.
Thank you for, for hearing from me again tonight, appreciate the time. Again, this is page 96, Planning Department Fiscal Year 26 Budget. I'll be relatively brief since you hear from the planning team quite a lot. We are a team of four full-time employees. I have to say, I get to come to work every day, working with extremely dedicated people, not only in the Planning Department, but in multiple departments throughout the city organization. Some of the guiding principles we have in the Planning Department is process, collaboration, communication, and transparency. I hope many of you have seen the changes of the last two and a half so years being made about everything from how we do planning, development reviews, to how you access information on our webpage, et cetera, et cetera. We're always looking for ways to improve. Some highlights from calendar year 2024, for us, it's a lot easier to report in calendar year because it clean, it's basically how we run our records. We had 120 reviews we did, we did 96-plus meetings where the planning, one of your planning team members was either making the agenda for the meeting, facilitating the meeting, or organizing the meeting. Last year, I attended about 14 council meetings, I attended more, but we did 14 council workshop presentations, so those were a lot of fun, I appreciated all the input, and we're following up on those ordinance amendments after we're done with the contract zone project. We did 15 neighborhood meetings where we had really good interactions with the public. This is something we've highlighted very strongly, getting out to members of the public and their communities before a development just shows up, a development proposal just randomly shows up on an agenda. We did, we monitored 1,500-plus conditions of approval, and we have 154 new house units that were reviewed and approved. Some of these are in subdivisions, and some of these are in dwelling units, more multifamily Just some really great stuff. We appreciate the council's support on adding the fourth position to the planning team. We have somebody in that position, she's doing great work, she started in December. We completed the Climate Adaptation and Action Plan, the new agenda management software. We worked really closely with the Communications Department to get going and with other departments. We kicked off our Transportation Master Plan, that was actually a lot of fun in August with the National Night Out. We're leading the Housing Action Plan, and we're leading the Portland Road Master Plan, and we led workshops and community discussions. Just want to say, one of our goals was also to become a resource in the community, and I think you've seen the planning team members out a lot more than the Planning Department has ever been out before. One of the things we really had fun doing this year was Shannon, our Assistant Planner for Historic Preservation Commission, did a haunted cemetery tour. And you know, you wonder, is that a valuable use of time? Well, I'll tell you, it's very valuable because we met new property owners who came out just to hear the cemetery tour, and we were able to connect with them on questions they had in their community on ongoing development or on development that would soon be proposed. And those are the types of things that make us more useful to the community than just coming out and, and being yelled at at a public hearing about someone being upset about development near their home. We really want to be here to help everyone, is my point. So building on that, Fiscal Year 26 projects and goals, you, you already see, there's, we've already been doing a lot on the compliance side. We were left with a lot to clean up. I anticipated that when I came back here for planning as a director, it would take about three years to clean up fully the Planning Department, and we are on year three, so I'm really grateful for that extra support so we can keep things moving along. We're working on implementation and some completion of plans and studies. We are asking for some funding on the capital plan side, I won't get too much into that because you're going to be going over to the capital plan at the next presentation, next, on the 28th, I believe. But we are asking for some funds to do hyper-local neighborhood assessments, this is something our Climate Adaptation Plan identified. So if there's a need in the neighborhood, we would like to know about it, so we know as things, as we grow and develop in Saco, what these individual neighborhoods need. And we're going to try to prioritize that based on the results of the vulnerability assessment, looking at everything from drainage to any type of infrastructure improvements that may be necessary, or things like traffic that are really concerning to people. We're looking to complete the Portland Road Master Plan, I know there's a lot of discussion on it, but we've had really great discussion. My dream of a PF Chang's probably will not come to fruition, but I'm still holding out. And then we'll continue to provide a critical development review services to our community. And like I said, we're always looking for improvements on that side as well. I think the Agenda Management Software made it a lot easier to find documents and make it readily apparent where public comment is, things like that. Budget overview for expenses, we really looked closely at our budget, and we are coming in with a overall negative percentage from year over year, but it is not quite negative because we have salaries with fringe benefits for COLA adjustments considered in there, but our operating budget that we're requesting is a negative 3.3%. We're requesting about a negative 18.3% on other operating. Basically, the, we had funds for the archival records project last year to scan all the files on the stage, to clear the stage. That project is still ongoing, it is heavy, heavy lift, but we are making our way through it. I would say don't go back in this, in this, clearing the stage right now is not cleared yet, but I'll let you know when it's cleared. So that is one of the reasons why we could come in with a negative percentage here, because we do not need that to be funded again. We have asked for some funding, like I said, in plans and studies, we're looking to support some other departments as well, we're looking for sea level rise resiliency that we're going to be looking to help with, as well as some Route 1 study reviews. So we are asking for some of those plans and studies funding that maybe we would have asked for in the operating funds, to please be funded out of capital since most of those take more than a year to complete. And are with other departments, not with the Planning Department alone. As far as our revenues, we did drop our estimated revenues, we had a bump up last year, and we wanted to make sure that we were conservatively reflecting revenues, especially with things going on in the world right now, so we wanted to make sure that we were more in line with what we thought the estimate may be. I just went over this, that we came in lower on the operating side. I want to do a big thank you to our committees, boards, and commissions, I've listed them all here, but when we're out late at night, so are they and their volunteers, so we really super appreciate all their energy and efforts, and a lot of the things that we did this year, especially on the planning board side and historic preservation side and others would not have been possible without their dedicated support. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Director Prescott? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I've been watching the activity of the Planning Board for five years prior to my arrival here on the council. In fact, my arrival here on the council was contributed to by the fact that I saw some things going on that I didn't like. And I, they still bother me today. You know, I have access to, as a citizen, FOIA information where I found that there, in my opinion, inappropriate ex parte communications going on. I actually saw in communications, a discussion about weakening the Planning Board by removing members who, who may have been doing their job and not appreciated. And so that, that's disconcerting to me, but I can tell you that in my observations, many observations, in fact, I want to thank the mayor for appointing me liaison two years in a row. Part of my hope was that I'd be sitting here in the evening watching what's going on. And I'm going to say to you that you have cleaned up a lot. What we see today in our Planning Board meetings is a testimony to, first of all, the recognition of the importance of that role, and also the fact that, and with all due respect to all of our citizens, it takes a special person with special competencies and skills to perform as a Planning Board member. It's a hard job, and, and the mayor has worked very, very hard to find appointments that meet that competency level, and it's showing, all right? It shows every night I come here, in particular, the, the extreme focus, effective focus on findings of fact conclusions, that's what keeps us out of lawsuits, and that's what has gotten us into trouble in the past. And the whole Planning Board is like laser-focused with your direction in, in getting that done. So I want to just pat you on the back, I want to let these folks here sitting at this dais know that when she says she's been fixing things, she's been fixing things, okay? And she's smart enough to know she's got a little bit more work to do, okay? So we just need to be here to encourage that, and I know I will, as long as I'm sitting here and, and acting as liaison. I also want to point out to my colleagues here on the dais that we had a slide that said we had 154 new housing units approved in 2024. So if, if, if anybody up in Augusta wants to call us nimby's, shame on them. Absolutely shame on them. Because if you take that 80,300-unit mandate, well, it wasn't a mandate, but a recommendation from the powers-to-be at the State House, and you break it down by municipality, by population, I'm going to tell you all that Saco is making its contribution, its fair contribution to the housing shortage. That number is a good number, okay? And I'd hold it up against any other municipality in the state of Maine. And when we get garbage journalism, my opinion, garbage journalism on the front page of the Press Herald, calling us anti-development nimby's, shame on them! And I, it gets me mad, all right? So keep it up, okay? You're doing all the right things, you've got, the stars are aligning, the mayor is laser-focused on keeping strength in that Planning Board for you, and, and just keep, keep going, okay? Because it's, it's a good path to be on, all right?
Thank you, anyone else?
I would just like to put the thanks out there for what you've done with the Long Range Planning Committee. That new board that we started in 2019, I fortunately was able to start on that as liaison, the plan with it, it was a new board, how are we going to do it, what are we going to do? And you have taken that committee and have run with it. And to have them included in the Portland Road Master Plan, all of the groups, they're doing a great job. So I appreciate including that into your role in the department as well, and I think it's working out perfectly. Thank you.
Thank you. They meet April 23rd.
All right, anyone else for Director Prescott? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, up next we have the City Clerk, and that is page 80 of your budget book.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilors, Administrator Bohenko. The City Clerk's office has two full-time employees, the City Clerk as well as the Deputy City Clerk. We also have a part-time General Assistance Administrator that works roughly 20 hours per week, and an Assistant City Clerk that works on an as-needed basis. She comes in for elections when we're licensed and dogs, as well as process and business This next slide is some highlights through February 20th. It's just some of the functions that the office does. For the presidential election, we had a voter turnout of 83.21%. For the presidential election, we had a voter turnout of 83.21 percent. That was 12,957 voters who voted. 7,209 residents elected to cast an absentee ballot, and 5,748 residents attended the polls. We certified 3,850 petition signatures, and we also had 6,007 voter registration updates. The 6,007 does include 854 residents who registered on Election Day, as well as the state of Maine in February did a statewide purge. So voters who had not voted in two general elections were deleted from the list. That equaled 2,436 people. Moving on to records, we processed 37 formal requests, completed 20 sets of minutes, and codified seven ordinances. Under the vital records, we recorded 131 birth records, 177 marriage records, 295 death records, and issued 1,450 certified copies. Moving on to licensing, we have 456 businesses, four cannabis establishments, 2,355 dogs were licensed, we processed 19 liquor licenses, issued 88 morin permits, and we currently have 23 people on the morin waitlist. Under the general assistance section, we took applications from 177 families, which included 317 people. The expenditures to date were $159,472.11, and we do receive 70 percent reimbursement from the state of Maine, which equates to $111,630.48. One thing I would like to note is that last year at the same time, we had accepted 84 applications from residents. So our caseload has actually doubled this year. For the accomplishments, staff was able to attend train-ins for elections, cybersecurity, de-escalation techniques, and general assistance. We were also provided with statewide dog license and software so that the whole state is connected now. And we also received alcoholic beverage license and software so that the residents can process their licenses online. We still go through the same process. We check with police fire codes and taxes to make sure that there are no issues, and then we can sign off on that in the portal. For Election Day, we did conduct absentee voting here in the auditorium. The week before the election, we chose to do early absentee ballot processing, and we were able to process 5,849 absentee ballots that did not have to go to the polls that day. The only thing that went to the polls were the USB sticks that had all those results on them, and the wardens closed the polls out on the early absentee processing after the regular Election Day was completed. For ongoing absentee ballots, we're still offering that option. That's for residents who are 65 and over or who self-identify as having a disability. And to date, we have 273 residents who have signed up. For Election Day operations, we changed things up a little bit by using different entrances for the voter registration and the voting so that lines didn't intermingle and create unnecessary wait times. We also had additional staffing for voter registration. We had greeters that helped direct voters to their check-in table and assist voters who were not sure if they were registered to vote. We were lucky that day. The weather held out, so we were able to have our voter registration list just outside the voter registration door so that voters could go and check to see if they were registered or if they were all set and could just go into the gymnasium to vote. We also trained the election staff on new security measures in case of an incident at the polling location. The goals for next year are to review the temporary records for expired records that can be purged based on the state archives, local government retention schedules, to review the department's website information to ensure it is accurate and up to date, and to research and review technology for track and Freedom of Access Act requests, time and cost estimates, and receipt of documents from various departments. The budget overview for expenses, the fiscal year '26 budget for the city clerk's department totals $495,361 and represents an increase of $61,616 or 14.2 percent compared to fiscal year '25. $11,769 net increase in personnel reflects the cost of living COLA for 2026. $49,847 net increase in other operating is primarily the result of clerk's operating budget. There was a $479 increase for codification of code, language interpreter services for general assistance and the clerk's office, general assistance after hours phone, and council minutebook. We did have a decrease in the voter registration budget of $660 in ballot printing costs. In the general assistance department, we did have an increase of $50,028 for rental assistance and convey 911 communications platform for language interpreter services. For the budget overview for revenues, we just basically looked at the fees from the previous years and either reduced them or increased them based on the actual past revenues. And this does include the total cost that the municipality keeps after we've paid the state for, say, costs associated with vital records and dog license and fees.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for City Clerk Hughes? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. One question on some of your accomplishments, and then one real budget-related question. You talked about a statewide voter purge that removed 2,436 voters based on not voting in two general elections in a row. Are they notified? Do they know they're no longer registered to vote?
I do not believe that the state notifies them, no.
Thank you. And then the second question is, I noticed that general assistance expenditures are budgeted against your expenses, but I don't see the reimbursements budgeted against your revenues. And I'm wondering where those reimbursements are accounted for? If anybody knows.
Is that the welfare reimbursement line? Welfare.
Just that, I think--
Those numbers don't work, I don't think.
Well, the, sometimes there's the quarterly, sometimes it's a catch-up where you have not that particular four quarters. You might have three quarters in a fiscal year. I think last year, we had that situation, didn't we?
Correct.
Yeah, so we catch up on it, but it's just, this is what we had as of printing the budget.
What we've actually received.
Right, right. So we follow up and make sure that we file for everything that we are entitled to. And I, you know, at this point, you know, I think there's one thing that we do have to recognize. If you, as the city clerk said, we've doubled the number of applications. So I may be talking to the council further on into this process to maybe try to get another part-time person, because when one person goes down, it becomes a strain on other parts of the city hall. So, you know, we have to, we have to, this is the law, we have to follow it. And so I'll be talking more to the council about this. It's not going to be a huge budget item, but I think it's just getting somebody trained, get some cross-training, and that's what we're doing. We're doing some cross-training internally right now, so that's happening as well.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. And I guess my, I'm a big supporter of general assistance, and I appreciate the need for additional support. I'd be happy to support that. I'm just looking at the numbers, and at least for the budgeted expenditures are $173,000, but the reimbursements are $88,000, which, I didn't bring out my calculator, but--
No, this doesn't work.
It doesn't work.
No, and as I said, I think last year, we actually were behind on one quarter that we were dealing with, but I'll get the information.
Presumably, it catches up. So even if we're behind, we should be getting the last quarter of the year before and something. You get the idea.
I mean, when you have somebody working 20 hours a week, I think that's one of the problems that I, you know, you have to file all that information, you have to get that all done. You're working with your clients, you're also filing paperwork for your clients, so I will get you a better answer.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Hatch?
Yes, and I appreciate the timing issues. I'm sure that's it, but it's a good question. Michelle, can you, can you talk to me a little bit about the general assistance expenditure? And I'm happy with just off topic ahead. What percentage of our general assistance goes to rental assistance, and how much, if any, of it goes to other issues like food insecurity?
I would say that 90 percent is for rental assistance. The next biggest one would be food assistance, CMP, and then fuel assistance.
Okay. All right. And is it, is it, is it fair to assume that if, and are you limited in terms of rental assistance? Is a number that, a max that you can give, or is there a formula of some type?
There is a maximum. That's what comes before the council each fall to review, and there's recommended numbers for different communities, and--
Okay.
--this community is elected to do the maximums that the city of Portland has, which are the highest ones.
Thank you for that. All right, I'm just trying to get that clear in my head. If I may, City Administrator Bohenko, there's a reference on budget page 83 to the completion of the general assistance standard operating procedure manual. Can I get a copy of that?
Sure.
Okay. Just for my own, I just want to see kind of how this thing works. I've got some ideas that I'd like to try to churn through my head first before I bring them forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Before I go, one thing I would like to mention is that for the residents, we are having an election on June 10th. Just a reminder, it's the school budget validation referendum election. Absentee ballots will be available starting on May 13th, and the last day to request an absentee ballot will be Thursday, June 5th. Will be open until 6:00 PM that evening, and the polls will be open from 7:00 AM till 8:00 PM on Election Day at Thornton Academy.
Thank you very much. Okay, and next on the agenda this evening, we have the Information Technology Department, and that is page 85 of your budget book.
I'm Ryan Panero, the City of Saco's Information Technology Director. The IT budget this year can be found on page 85. So tonight, we'll look at our team's structure, highlight key achievements, and outline to clarify how this budget strengthens our digital defenses for a thriving community. Our IT crew is a tight-knit circuit powering Saco's digital core with precision. We're three dedicated experts, myself as director overseeing strategy and security, a senior systems engineer who shines as the star of our award-winning training videos, boosting staff awareness, and a senior network engineer, the backbone to our connectivity, ensuring uninterrupted networks. This efficiency keeps Saco's services reliable and productivity tools such as Wi-Fi, ERP, and software solutions, supporting every department's mission. So in fiscal year 2025, our help desk resolved 1,618 unplanned efforts. That's down 8.6 percent. It would be down a lot more if there weren't two pretty major issues with Windows updates that caused us about 40 to 60 additional support requests this year, and an issue with a company called CrowdStrike that we use. Our infrastructure, this is our computers, our cameras, our switches, our, every piece of IT equipment. We have about 652 total devices. That replacement value after realizing new costs is about $1 million. The City of Saco IT department, we support 72 business applications. So that's our productivity suites, our permitting, our websites, everything that connects and all of users use. This fiscal year, we supported and installed 99.8 percent of all security patches within a set timeframe of two weeks for standard patching, then within three days for security patches. So a 99.8 percent patch compliance is extremely good, in my opinion. So for our email testing and how we see what users are doing on our, on our network, Saco score, risk score averaged 38.1. So this takes into account training, what we see users click through when they get emails, what sort of web URLs they're going to. The municipal average is about 50 percent, so we're well below that, and we're a 16 percent decrease from fiscal year '25. So we're constantly getting better with all of these protocols and everything, all of our policies and procedures. Users are spotting things a lot quicker, efficient throughout their day. Through the year, we had 140 users respond to our post-support survey. Each one of them ranked the IT department with a five-star, typically some sort of positive feedback. We don't always get a note about what they liked, it's just click the buttons and go So in the, in fiscal year '25, some of our accomplishments, we continue and will continue to implement CIS controls. These are the enhancements to our security protocols throughout the network. Most of them are administrative controls that we place onto our, our devices. So whether it be how we build our, our computers to deploy out, what sort of firewall rules and settings we're setting, what sort of administrative controls we're setting so that, what can users can do on the computers. Our help desk issues have dropped by 8.6 percent, 8.64, and we've improved, and we're continuing to improve this fiscal year, our wireless infrastructure. We're moving to a Wi-Fi six access points that are a little more, have a little more throughput, and a little wider range to, for connectivity. We did win the 2024 Blue Pencil Award, and that was just last year, for our wonderful Nightmare on Main Street. A huge thanks to the Communications Department. Their creativity while we're making these videos is, is huge. Andrew informed me yesterday that-- while we're making these videos is, is huge. Andrew informed me yesterday that the one that we just produced for this fiscal year has placed, but we don't know what place yet. So that is, that would be three awards and three videos in three years. So Henry loves to get into those characters. The Communications Department does a fantastic job helping us create them. So recently, we incorporated the Dyer Library, Saco Museum into our IT management and support. So we're, we're providing ongoing support, but we're also able to extend some of the solutions that we use here in the city to better protect the, the library and the museum This year, I obtained my Certified Information Officer through UNC Chapel Hill. Henry successfully, after tons and tons of work, obtained his CISSP certification. That, that is a huge accomplishment. That's not just a cert that you can take a test for. You have, you do have to take a test for it, but you have to have a certain amount of time and service. You have to have someone vouch for you. These are all, it's, they do a resume review, and they, the test isn't just, here's a multi-choice that you can just know. These are applying security principles. So we're really happy for him obtaining that. Joe's working towards his CAC NP, Cisco Certified Network Professional. This is an elevated certification beyond the CCNA that he has currently. We're currently piloting community security cameras. Some of you may have heard, we put one up at Water and Main Street. It's a four-way camera. We also have one out on Garfield and North Street, right at where you're not supposed to turn left. So we have a camera there. We have this four-way camera over here at, at Water Street. So far, all the, all the people have looked at it, think that it's a fantastic camera. So we'll look to see if we can add some more of those sorts of solutions throughout the city. So this impact is, all of this modern technology that we have to keep adding, hopefully this is making users faster with better citizen services. So our fiscal year 2026 goals, one of the largest applications throughout the city that affects most of the citizens is our Police CAD RMS software. I'm certain Jack may have talked to you all about that. But that, the system that we have currently is about twenty-six years old, twenty-seven. It works, it's functional. The issue with it is that it hasn't kept up with modern use. So as we move into, and we're moving there quicker and quicker into this native technology user, they like to see a better graphical user interface. The way that the current CAD is, it's very like AS400, if you, if anyone has worked in like a warehouse. So it's got just, there isn't much to it. So the systems that we're looking at hope to improve officer efficiency, right? We're looking to take a, a report from an hour for an officer to complete down to fifteen, twenty minutes by consolidating how those reports are built, as well as ensuring that workflows and all of the associated documents to those reports are all completed without dual entry, triple entry, having to fill in somebody's name five or six times through each document that they have to fill out. We're continuing, I spoke to you all about this last year, the phone system. Ours is still functional, it still works. The problem is that the equipment that we have is running into end-of-life. We still have some time with it. It'll still function and, and work correctly as we move forward. The issue is that our, our system is an internal VoIP phone system, and we're looking for a more robust whole-city VoIP system. So what we, we're looking at, though, the systems that are available offer too much. We don't want the text messaging and all of those things, because that just starts more issues throughout the city. So what we're looking at is a pared-down VoIP system. We've found a vendor, and now it's working towards contract and figuring out, can we get it for, you know, the hope is less than the cost of our existing phone system, if not right at it. Explore AI. It's a big thing. Every department has asked me about it. My response is always cautiously optimistic, right? We want to, we want to make sure that whatever we're using, that it's, it's going to give us the best use for each department, right? We don't want to just start allowing users to, to just bang through the keyboard of, tell me everything about this. We really want to look at how we can affect citizens, how we can curb processes within the city. So kind of think like a chatbot, where a twenty-four seven citizen inquiries can happen, so permitting process and things like that, predictive analytics for infrastructure, and to improve service delivery. So investments in Saco keep competitive, sorry, investments keep Saco competitive and secure. So risks and challenges that will, we, we have continued to see, have seen, and will likely see this year, sixty-nine percent of local governments reported ransom and phishing attacks in 2024. It's a significant number that we're continuing to keep our eyes on. One of the ways that we mitigate this factor is we use, they had an issue, but they are still the cutting-edge of enterprise, so detection and response. We continue to use CrowdStrike, and we're going to continue to use them throughout, through the next fiscal year. There was an opportunity to move to a federally funded system through Center of Information Security. I was hesitant to move to that this year, because we're not sure how funding will continue with that program. And changing antivirus and EDR and all of that is a very time-consuming task, that we want to make sure that we're not disrupting and leaving us, ourselves vulnerable for any amount of time. And we have, we have a fairly good locked-in price on our CrowdStrike. If we were to leave and come back, we likely wouldn't see that, that same cost, or we would likely see something twenty-five to thirty-five percent higher than what we're currently paying. I did get them to cut the fiscal year twenty-six increase, so we're just flat on that EDR line. It's no secret, talent retention and recruitment, it's every department. You know, now that my department is getting more and more certified, they're becoming better at their jobs, and they're becoming much more valuable. So, you know, I want to continue to offer to them training, because the more that we train and can do internally, the less and less we have to outsource. So by, we, as the IT department, outsource nothing. Everything is done internally except for wire throughout the buildings. We just don't have the, the hours in the day to pull wires throughout the building. So AI adoption complexity, twenty-five percent of municipalities plan pilot AI in 2026, but eighty percent cite integration and ethical concerns. That's always been my biggest concern when utilizing AI. We have to recognize that these are trained based off of the Internet, and the Internet can be a terrible place. So understanding when they're using them to, to catch bias and watch what they're, what they're reading, what they're about to, to push out to the citizens before it's published. We want to read, 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 and read again. So the IT budget changes for the fiscal year twenty-five to twenty-six. The FY twenty-six for the Information Technology Department totals six hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars, and represents an increase of forty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars, or eight point three percent. Thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two is an increase in personnel, reflecting cost of living, market adjustments, and in addition to an on-call stipend for the technician that's on call for the two-week period. Seven thousand, nine hundred and five dollars, or two point nine percent, for our operating expenses. The majority of this is for the licensing for new users, but also typically a five percent uptick in any software solutions that we're using. We do have a slight decrease in our know-before, because we rolled that into the HR IS system. So instead of having our own training portal, we now just have a single one that everyone funnels into. And then we had a slight increase in printing costs. So our printing cost isn't IT. We don't print anything. It's a whole-city print cost, just so you guys are aware. So that's our vision for 2026. My team is dedicated to protecting Saco's technology, from fire stations to libraries, for every resident. Contact me at rpanero@saco main.org with any questions. This budget drives public safety, boosts efficiency through software consolidation, explores AI to enhance services, keeping Saco secure and ready for the future. Thank you for your support. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Ryan? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhill. I have a curiosity question, because you piqued my curiosity about the cameras. I've been a big camera guy, and I, I keep getting objections to these cameras, because I personally think we have to find a way to use cameras to assist us in public safety. So can you just briefly tell me what kind of data you're capturing at these cameras, and what the purpose of that data is?
So this is a trial camera for now. All of our cameras are security cameras, not traffic cameras. So writing speeding tickets for traffic and infringements and things like that, from what I'm told and what I'm aware of, state statute doesn't allow that. But they can be used to look at an incident at a, at a intersection, right? So we can identify fault, we can look towards what sort of contributing factors. Was someone, you know, on their cellphone? While that may not be something that we could find them for, we can likely set it as a contributing factor. So the cameras that we use do have AI built into them. So we can do things such as, you know, mark someone as a purchase of, a person of interest, and if they're coming around, they can, are, we can set up alerts for those people. We can look for vehicles. So take the incident that happened here last year. You know, if we had cameras throughout, at some of the major intersections, we could say, we're looking for a maroon Silverado. It would look through our camera footage and be able to show us all the times that a maroon Silverado came through the intersection. They don't track speed. None of our external cameras have audio capabilities. They're strictly there as a security camera, mostly for a record, a kind of a monitor after the fact. Nothing where, you know, currently, we have about seventy-six cameras at our municipal buildings. No one can watch seventy-six cameras at once, even if we're rolling them through. So they're, they're there for the police departments to use as, as ways of identifying things that happen.
That's a start. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Great. Thank you for your work at the Dyer Library and the museum.
Oh, no.
I am hearing nothing but wonderful, great things. All of the staff that has been incorporating into the library and the museum, it's, it's just been phenomenal. And again, such positive reviews from the staff there. They love working with everyone, seeing everyone come in, and so just thanks for everyone for that. Okay, up next, we have the Water Resource Recovery Group, and that is Page two oh seven of your budget book.
All right, folks. Some of my stuff's pretty small. Good evening, folks. Thanks for having me. Getting long in the night here, next to the last one. So this picture that you see in front of you was taken last July when we did, on the opening slide, is when we did the groundbreaking back down in, down in July. We had some of the dignitaries around town. Of course, there's me starting on the right, going to Mayor Jody McPhail right there next over, to Senator Susan Collins joined us that day. Also David Cash, he's the Regional, EPA Region One Administrator, he was in the last administration. Brian Amborat, he was from the Governor's Office of Sustainability. And finally, Melanie Loison, and she's the DEP Commissioner. So it was quite a turnout we had that day, and some of you folks were there with us. Glad to have you. So next up is our organizational chart. That hasn't changed over the years. We still have the same amount of folks taking care of the treatment plant and the thirty-two pump stations that we have around the city. But also, you'll see off to the side in purple, those are positions we fund over at Public Works. Those are three and a half FTEs. That's a utility form, an equipment operator and a camera operator that you see going around. Actually, the camera operator isn't really a full FTE, because we share him with benefit in, in Washington. And then for our year-end review, this last year, this, these numbers are at the end of the calendar year, not the fiscal year. We had five thousand and eighty-six residential customers. That's up from four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight the year before. We actually had four hundred and fifteen non-residential sewer connections. That would be any commercial, industrial. And that's up, too, from four hundred and six. The average sewer bill for residential last year was one eighteen a quarter. That was up from one fourteen forty-eight the year before. And sewer abatements this year was up three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. You folks that don't have it, those are subtractive meters that go on the outside of your house, whether it's for irrigation or cow washing and whatnot. And we had forty-seven inches of rain last year, which was actually quite a bit down from where it was previously. The year before, we, we actually had seventy-one inches. And with that, that actually dropped our flow down. Last year, we treated eight hundred and five million gallons of water through the facility. That was down from nine hundred and sixty-three million the year before, because as you get more rain, we tend to get more flow through ionized iron floor infiltration. And we still have a lot of catch spaces downtown that are tied in. And our biosolids production actually went up to twenty-two, twenty-two hundred and seventeen pounds. That's up from nineteen hundred and eighty the year before. So some of our big accomplishments this year, as some of you folks, I think probably most of you have been down, see the construction down at the new treatment plant, or you've seen it on, you get the camera going live all the time. So we're probably thirty-five percent through construction right now. You'll see a new headworks building down by where the admin building is, and you see the big tank across from the art club. That's actually the new treatment plant. So we're pretty excited about that. We are on pace now for probably starting to get some new equipment coming in this year, and then we'll start turning some off. We'll get some new equipment in to put in that new tank by fall. And this time next year, we should be turning on the new system. So we're going to be running two plants at the same time there for a while, till hopefully in December of 2026 will be a substantial completion. Well, that means everything will be operational. But it'll probably be till the spring of twenty-seven by the time we get the lawn all seeded and the green spaces done and those type of things. And also this past year, we've remained committed to promoting staff education, just like I think Emily talked about earlier, and very committed to training staff to the highest level, always looking for promotion. But over the years, even if they've moved on to another municipality, you kind of pay it forward, but, but that actually helps draw people in. We've never really had any trouble trying to find somebody to come in. So it's, it's worked out pretty well for us. And we remain active in associations, whether local or nationally, and that pays a lot of dividends right there. And that pays a lot of dividends, very clear. So we also did some improvements at several of the pump stations. We did all of our control panels, knew what Strawberry Fields, Bear Brook and Goose Fair pump stations. We've also done an excellent job, the staff has, is doing maintenance, you know, not reactive maintenance, preventive maintenance, so we can keep ahead of these things. We also spent a lot of time this year on odor compliance. As some of you know, like Joe and a few others that's lived down in the Route 1 corridor, we've really abated those quite a bit this last year. We were down just to a handful, and we hope to get better as it's coming. And it also helps too that Ready Seafood is putting a substantial amount of money into their facility this year too. They're spending almost a million dollars to help with some of those things. Some of the goals we're coming up is, like I said, we're going to see some of the major equipment showing up this year. We'll get that going online, and we'll continue with our maintenance program. Some of those are the big goals. But the big goal out of all of them is to get the new plant running and try to get this up to speed. And also this year, we introduced a new FOG program, that's fats, oils and grease. So we've made a concerted effort to go to every establishment in the city. And we've got them now, pretty much all of them, even some that didn't have grease traps, all in compliance. A lot of them all want to do the right thing. So we work with them. And now we're tracking it all online. They'll get notices when the stuff's due. It connects them right to Hollis, whether it's Quick Drain or Casella, whoever, to come in and clean out the grease traps. And it's paying big dividends for us. So we don't have to really go down with the jet truck and clean a lot of those things out. A quick overview of the budget, expenses and the revenues. What I think, I'll come back to those with questions. I'll probably just go to my next page just to explain some of those if you want to go on the expense bot. But so basically what we're looking at is a budget of $5,659,000 and change. And that's an increase of $723,823, or a 14.7% increase over fiscal year 2025. Now, some of that's attributed to cost of living raises as a co-op. But $632,000 of that is operating costs as a result of utilities. We're up almost $19,000 on electricity costs. Our biosolids removal is up $13,000. That's just due to cost of living with our contracts at a 3.5% increase. Aggregation abatements, now this is really a big one. We had to move that up to $125,000 more than we had. That's a tricky one because some years it's up, some years it's down. It depends when they call their meter readings in, whether they get captured in this fiscal year or the previous fiscal year. But regardless, we were still down quite a bit. Every year, I swear, there can be no more meters bought, and we go through hundreds of them every year, so they just keep coming. So we're certainly not going to charge those folks the water they didn't use, so we put it back. We're also going to fund $87,500 for a ZNC study, sea level rise down at Camp Ellis. We're going to partner with Main Water and that as well to see how our pump stations, all our lines are there. We're also going to look at the roads and infrastructure with that. So we're going to pay for some of that at a TIF, so that's a big one coming up. And the big one is capital reserve. We haven't really been carrying a capex number, but this year, the City Administrator and I thought it was the best interest, just the cost of the upgrade going up. We want to make sure that we're not caught with not enough money to finish this project. We're in so far now. In the first part of the project, we had to cut out the solids handling, which is the thickening. But now we're getting it back in, we're getting some prices. Of course, now we've got the tariffs and everything else that we're worrying about. Rest assured, we're still trying to go out to some more money. I had the mayor sign another letter tonight, looking for some more CDS funding. So hopefully we'll do that through Senator Collins and King. And we are working with the Main DEP to see if we can get some more principal forgiveness. So we're checking every box we can to try to stay ahead of everything. So with that, I can answer any questions you folks have, whether it's on the budget part of it or any of the costs.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for Director Carter?
All right. Thank you, folks.
All right, that was a quick and easy one for you.
Yeah, well, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, and next up, we have the Fire Department this evening, and that is on page 131 of your budget books.
Hi, good evening. Madam Mayor, City Council, City Administrator Bohenko, thank you for allowing me to present my first Fire Department budget and last one of the evening. So I'm happy to report the Fire Department is full. We're fully staffed. So we have 42 career firefighter EMS providers. It's broken into two shifts of 10, two shifts of 11. We also have four chief administrative staff, about 20 call department members and an executive assistant. Back in December, we were able to negotiate a new contract with our union folks. It's about a 15-month contract through 2026. And I'm happy to report, we've probably had five or six lateral transfers since that from other departments that brought different levels of experience education. So that's been very helpful, so thank you for that. So when we look at our budget, really it's broken down into two, you know, salary wages and operations. Obviously with the wages taking the heavy lift this year with the new contract. But again, that was really industry standard. It brought a great investment to the city and to the Fire Department. The other piece we looked at and will talk about is we're proposing two new positions for the Fire Department to try to get our staffing levels up a little bit. So data with the Fire Department, we typically report it in calendar year versus fiscal year, and that's really just in line with federal and state numbers. So for calendar year 2024, we did a total of 4,651 emergency calls. So that's about a 9% increase from calendar year '23. We're continuing to see, you know, steady increases for calls for service. Broken down, that's about 3,436 EMS calls or emergency calls. So about 74% of our total call volume was EMS-related. We transported 2,371 patients. We had almost 900 non-transports, and we had a little over 170 patients transported by mutual aid communities. Additionally, we had 1,215 fire calls. That was about almost a 25% increase from fiscal year '23. And that ranged from fires locally and with mutual aid departments. It could be motor vehicle accidents, anything really non-EMS-based, we kind of put into the fire category. We look at mutual aid responses. Saco received 308 mutual aid responses, and we provided mutual aid 347 times throughout the calendar year. And when we weren't doing calls, we were trying to do as much community outreach as we could. We partnered up with age-friendly. We've done a lot of local community outreach preventative stuff. We also did Harbor Fest, and we participated in a lot of the local community events. So some of our fiscal year '25 accomplishments, we were able to hire two new firefighter EMS providers. We purchased 10 Trivan portable radios as part of a capital plan communications upgrade project. Some of our member accomplishments, we had four members complete a nationally-registered EMT advanced program. And we have eight members finishing up their last two weeks of a nationally-registered paramedic program, and they will be actually testing probably in the next 30 days. So that's huge. And we had 12 members of our current and future management team participate in a comprehensive leadership development series. So looking forward to 2026, some of our department goals is to increase staffing by two providers, working towards an overall goal of 48 career firefighter EMS providers. This will allow for a dedicated second staff ambulance and the ability to cross-staff a 30 ambulance. We're also looking to develop an in-house continuing education program to better support our main EMS licensed providers. We're working to develop our current and future leadership core through internal and external education and training opportunities. And finally, we're working with the assistance of the Main State Fire Marshal's Office. The Fire Department is working to develop a comprehensive community risk reduction program with a goal of reducing injuries and improving community safety. When we look at our requested staffing model, like I mentioned, we're at 47. We're asking for two new positions. Additionally, we're taking on the Harbor Master position, which was under the administrative budget. So that'll fall under the Fire Department budget. Just kind of following back to the previous slide, kind of looking at some of the expenses. And I think a lot of the operational stuff is really, is conducive secondary to our increase in call volumes, the repairs and maintenance and supplies. Again, this also has the two new positions built in for onboarding costs. Breaking this down a little bit deeper, the budget is, for fiscal year 2026, is $5,752,000. It represents an increase of $866,000, or a 17.7% increase from fiscal year '25. $795,000 or 92% of the increase is contractual wages and benefits. And the other 8% or $71,000 is for firefighter equipment, EMS supplies, education, training, contractual services, vehicle maintenance, and $34,000 for onboarding costs for two new positions in the third quarter of 2026. Capital requests, we're looking to replace a 2013 Chevy Tahoe and the addition of a utility vehicle for the Harbor Master position. When we look at fiscal year '26 revenues, it's in line with last year, right around $822,000. And with that, I can try to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Chief. Any questions or comments? Counselor Hewitt?
Just a quick question. You mentioned a dedicated second ambulance. Will we need to also purchase a new ambulance?
No, we currently, we actually just took, we took delivery of a new ambulance on Friday. So historically, we would always trade one in and keep one. So we have three ambulances currently. So we have two ambulances that are always in service, and then we have the third as a reserve. So the goal would be to probably look at having a fourth reserve. So once we have really three ambulances that are kind of being used consistently, we'd still have that one reserve in case we need to, you know, move one out or something.
Chief, you might want to mention for Counsel Hewitt's information that the ambulance department has, the revenues coming in go in reserve for ambulances, purchase of ambulances.
Sure, yeah. Our ambulance revenues, yeah, exactly. They pay for our ambulances and any...
So it doesn't typically come out of the general fund. It's those, I mean, those revenues that we receive for transport and other things.
Right, correct.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Thank you. And I'd just like to note to all departments, including Chief, you mentioned out one thing that I'm hearing from all departments and I'm seeing as well, is the outreach to the community. I've seen that since I started on council in 2019 through now, and I appreciate all of the efforts of all the departments of getting out in the community, meeting our residents, seeing them face-to-face. And it is across the board, whether it be the committees and commissions or the departments themselves. So I do appreciate all of that effort from all of you. Thank you. Okay, so that completes the budget presentations for the evening. That now takes us to item nine, and that is the administrative update. City Administrator Bohenko?
Yes, Your Honor. I sent everybody an informational item today. The city started our traffic signal project today at Saco Island East. During construction, two lanes of traffic will remain open with flaggers to allow vehicles to enter and exit the mill building entrance. Today, the single mast arms were removed to allow the contractor to begin installing the new mast arms bases and perform curb work. This work is estimated to be about two or three weeks to complete. Once this phase of the project is completed, the contract will demobilize for a few months until a new single equipment is delivered to be installed. There's quite a back order on these things. So if you need any more information, I can provide it to you.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments for the City Administrator? Okay, not seeing any. That now takes us to item 10, and that is council discussion and comment. Any counselors wishing to share? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge maybe for the public that during the last meeting, I'd asked some questions of the finance team regarding TIF funding and transfers to the general fund. And by the time the meeting ended, I received notification that the answers were available. And by the next morning, the council had received a memo outlining those details and how they were made. I just really want to appreciate Director Henderson and interim Director Belanger for their timeliness of answering the question. And I don't know if that memo has been shared with the public or not. If it hasn't, maybe it can. But the answers were clear and got back to me right away, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Moving on to item 11, that is an adjournment this evening, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn passes 6-0 at 9:27. And thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.